All right, we are now broadcasting. All right, we are about to start in about five minutes, the Board of Education meeting for School District U46. If you are a participant in the webinar who would like to make a public comment during the public comment section, please do so by going to the bottom of your screen, clicking on the Q and A, and entering your name, address, and the topic you would like to discuss, and we'll be glad to recognize you during the public comment section.
And I'm wondering if board members know they had to update their Zoom to 5.0, whatever it was, that may delay people for a few minutes if they have to do that.
Well, I admitted board member, oh, must be on the second screen. There we go.
No, I see Kate.
Here, Board Member Thomas is here.
Hello.
Hey, Kate.
Hi. Do you see me?
I see you. I see your picture. Hi, Eva.
Hi, how are you? How's everyone?
Hanging in there.
Once again, for those individuals who are joining as attendees for the session, if you're a parent of one of the top 2%, that is pretty close to the top of the agenda. We will play the video to highlight accomplishments. If you do have a public comment that you would like to make during the public comment section, please enter your name, address, and the topic you would like to discuss in the Q and A portion of the screen at the very bottom of your Zoom screen. We just had a special drive-by visitor by Board Member Owen. That was awesome. Good to see him.
Hello, Olivia.
Hi, how are you?
Fine. See, a summer has started.
Very much so. It doesn't feel like it, but here we are.
It looks like we're awaiting two board members. Is that right, Ms. Nolan and Ms. Deveraux?
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah.
President, it is seven o'clock.
And I see 59 participants. But I only see, or 60 now, but I only see people, I think. Can you see them all? Mr. Sanders, and you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, there's 36 panelists, and in our audience, there's 24 attendees. So
Okay.
mostly parents here to, and students to enjoy the top 2%.
Okay, okay.
I see Mr. Deveraux just entered, so let me get him into the meeting. Okay, Mr. Deveraux's now joined us as well.
Okay, so I will call the June 1st, 2020 U46 Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux. Here. Ms. Nolan.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mrs. Porter.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Madam President.
Here. And I'd also like to welcome Student Board Member Olivia Howell to the, I would say, table, but to the meeting. Before we do the pledge, I just wanted to make a statement about the fact that we're still doing virtual meetings. I wanted to note that Governor Pritzker has issued Executive Order Number 37 due to the continuing COVID-19 pandemic. This executive order extends changes to the Open Meetings Act, which were made in March. And this declaration does cover School District U46. As Board President, I have taken notice of Governor's declaration, and I have determined that an in-person Board of Education meeting is not practical or prudent because of the current health crisis. Therefore, all Board of Education meetings will be conducted by video conference without the physical presence of any board members until the Governor declares the health crisis is over. And now, if people could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And I'd also like now for us to have a moment of silence for two members of our U46 community who passed away recently. First, we would like to remember Lisa Mercado, who was most recently an instructional coach at Woods Park Elementary School. Lisa, who passed away on May 20th, joined U46 as a teacher at Hillcrest Elementary in 1990. She also worked at Highland, Creekside, and Ronald D. O'Neill Elementary Schools during her U46 career as a classroom teacher, literacy coach, and dual-language Ignite teacher. Lisa's coworkers say she always greeted everyone with a smile and led with a genuine spirit of service to staff and students. She often reminded her fellow teachers to just keep swimming in their collaborative efforts. Lisa is survived by her husband Mariano, a bilingual special education teacher at Highland, two sons and two stepsons. We will keep Lisa's family and friends in our thoughts and prayers. We also remember Christian Leon, a student at Elgin High School who passed away on May 16th. Christian, who was 16, had attended Els, Half Elementary School and Ellis Middle School before arriving at Elgin High School. He is remembered as a happy and energetic young man who loved soccer so much he would play it outside in terrible weather. His smile and laugh were contagious, and he was extremely loyal to his many friends who miss him dearly. Christian is survived by his mother, three older siblings, and a large extended family. We will keep Christians' family and friends in our thoughts and prayers. And now, if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, Mr. Sanders, accent on achievement.
Hopefully, you can see the screen, Madam President, and members of the Board of Education. As you know, annually, the Board has recognized the graduating top 2% of each graduating class, and this year was a little bit different. There, we're not giving families and the students the hors d'oeuvres that they would typically get, and the handshake at the end of the, at the end of the auditorium there, as we all would greet them. But we wanted to still make sure that we honored and recognized our top 2% of this year's graduating class. Our Communications Office worked diligently to put together a video highlighting our top 2% that we will play for you now as our accent on achievement. And that concludes our accent on achievement, recognizing our top 2% of our students.
That was great. Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of our students. We are so proud of you. That was, the top 2% is one of the many things we've missed this year, and I'm so sad we did, but congratulations. I know you'll do great in the future. So, any other board member have anything to add?
Congrats, everyone.
Congratulations. So proud of all of you.
Definitely. Congratulations. Very exciting.
The U46 kids, our graduates go everywhere. You, when you saw the shirts, it's
Oh, from east to west coast. They were made at Bowdoin, and they were peppered down, I think, as in California, so, and then down in Florida. Yeah, that's
We're taking it over the world.
Yep. All right, next, I believe, is public comment.
So, we are at the point in the meeting where the Board welcomes public comments from the audience. If you would like to have your voice heard right now, your ability to do so would be to enter in the Q and A portion on the screen at the bottom of the Zoom screen with your name, address, and the topic you would like to address. And we would be glad to unmute your microphone and bring you into the meeting for your public comment. Ruby, you want to translate that into Spanish for us? We have a lot of participants today. And for the rec record, Madam President, members of the Board, the Central Office is open for the meeting as well. Room 140 is open. It's displaying this meeting as we speak, and members are welcome to come in for that. And at this point, nobody has shown up at the office to participate.
And has anyone indicated in the Q and A that they'd like to speak?
No, there are no, no submissions.
All right, then I guess we'll move on to other business. Board Member and Superintendent update. Does anyone, any Board members, do any Board members have updates?
I have one.
Go ahead, Olivia.
I got to attend the DLR Learning Spaces Focus Group. There were students across U46 high school students who got together and were asked questions around learning spaces. So, it was super interesting, and I was really happy to be a part of it.
Oh, great. Anyone else? So, I wanted to say a few words about events that have shaken this country the past few days and which continue unfortunately tonight. I know many of us are angry, sad, and outraged. I know many of us are looking for ways to express the fury we feel. I know many of us despair that the injustices we have seen will ever be addressed. There are so many things to say, but I think many people have expressed it better than I can. I will just say we still have far to go to reach the goals expressed in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. As individuals, there is much we can and must do. But more important for us here tonight is we, as a school district, can make a difference. A difference that can improve the lives of our children. We must treat all children who come through our doors with respect and celebrate the unique qualities, culture, individuality, and diversity. We must offer all children a challenging education and give them the support they need to be successful. We must work with all our families and communities, even those we have difficulty reaching. This is not easy work. Yet, if every school district in this country took these step, steps, these, this country would be a beacon to the rest of the world. This is our challenge, and I believe it is America's challenge. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, May 18th, 2020, termination of Ada Barianto, Secretary, resolution for the display and public hearing on the Northern Kane County Regional Vocational System Budget for fiscal year 2021, a contract for, from curriculum instruction for Blue Streak Math Intervention Resource Adoption, contract renewal for curriculum instruction with ST Math Intervention Resource Renewal, proposal from curriculum instruction for Kami Distance Learning Resource Adoption, proposal from curriculum instruction for learning A to Z Distance Learning Resource Adoption, proposal from Information Services for Smart Board Replacement, and finally, building permits for plan operations, including Elgin High School Room 101, 13 wall projects.
Are there any items Board members would like removed from the consent agenda? In hearing then, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. This is Melissa.
I can't.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
Discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Under discussion action, our first item is itemized bills for June 1st, 2020. Mr. Burnage has joined the meeting and is available to answer any board questions on the itemized bills. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $14,72,561.09.
But I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of $14,72,561.09.
So moved. This is Veronica. Second, Eva Porter.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
Our next is the Elementary Integrated Curriculum Proposal. This was presented at the last board meeting as a work session and returns tonight under discussion action. If the Board has questions, Celia Banks, Coordinator of Elementary Literacy and Libraries, can answer any board questions. With that, Administration recommends adoption of the Elementary Integrated Curriculum Proposal.
I have a motion to approve the elementary graded curriculum proposal.
So moved. This is Veronica.
Second, Eva Porter.
Are there any questions or comments? A roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
And while you didn't hear it, teachers, elementary teachers from across the district just applauded. In case you didn't hear it, our next is the Middle School Family and Consumer Science Culinary and Personal Success and Culinary and Leadership Skills Curriculum Proposal. This was presented by, at the last board meeting as a work session and returns tonight under discussion action. If the Board has questions, Tracy Stewart, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education, has joined. Administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the Middle School Family and Consumer Sciences Culinary and Personal Success and Culinary and Leadership Skills Curriculum Proposal.
I have a motion to adopt the Middle School Family and Consumer Science Culinary and Personal Success and Culinary and Leadership Skills Curriculum Proposal.
So moved. This is Veronica.
Second, Kate.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
Our next item is the Middle School Family and Consumer Sciences Essential Technology Proposal. Again, Ms. Stewart joins to answer any board questions. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the Middle School Family and Consumer Science Essential Technology Proposal.
Could I have a motion to approve the Middle School Family and Consumer Sciences Essential Technology Proposal?
So moved. Veronica.
Second.
Ms. Nolan? And Mrs. Porter. Roll call?
Roll call, please. I'm sorry.
No problem. Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
Our next is the Heritage Spanish Curriculum Proposal, again presented to the last work session and returns tonight. Dr. Schroed is available to answer any board questions. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the Heritage Spanish Curriculum Proposal.
Could I have a motion to approve the Heritage Spanish Curriculum Proposal?
So moved. Second, Eva Porter.
Any question, or, sorry, roll call, no. Any questions, please? Sorry, but I tell my husband to turn the television down. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
And next to the minutes of the Board Committee Meeting before the Board of Education or the April 27th, 2020 Board of Education Finance Committee Minutes, Administration recommends the Board accept those minutes.
Could I have a motion to accept the 4/27/20 Board of Education Finance Committee Minutes?
So moved. This is Veronica Nolan.
Second, this is Melissa.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
Our next is the DuPage Regional Office of Education Treasurer Bond calculation. This is a form that requires a signature pursuant only of our three different counties, only required by DuPage County, where you attest, or the Board President is attesting to having a bonded treasurer. Before the Board can, or before the Board President can sign a document, we're asking for Board authority for her to sign this document, and then to have further discussion about what other documents the Board President can sign through policy.
I guess I need a motion to permit me to sign the DuPage Regional Office of Education Treasurer Bond calculation.
So moved. This is Veronica Nolan.
Second, Eva Porter.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux? Yes. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven, zero.
The other business, CAC update. I know CAC has ended their work for the year, and I, is it anyone from CAC? No.
I don't see any names of CAC reps on our, on our participant list or on the attendee list.
Okay, guess we move on to work session, then, Mr. Sanders.
The first work session item we have is the list of authorized depositories. I'm going to ask Mr. Burnage to present this item, Mr. Burnage.
Yes, in accordance with the board policy and investment of school district funds, we present this list once a year. These are the same ones that we've used in the past, and we've also provided updated financial statements.
Do any board members have any questions? Okay, thank you, Dale. All right.
So I'm just trying to get this, the, the next PowerPoint up and working, can you all see the PowerPoint now? Okay, our next item for the Board of Education for work session is the welding curriculum revision proposal. Here to present, I'll introduce Tracy Stewart, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education, and she'll introduce any other presenters as we go. Tracy, take it away.
Thanks, Tony, good evening. So I'm presenting by myself today because the teachers are on summer vacation, and I wanted them to enjoy their first week off. So the purpose of this presentation today is to present the work that's been done to revise the welding curriculum as a full welding technology pathway. So the welding pathway began in 2017, 2018 school year and has seen rapid growth since then. This pathway culminates in students achieving their, their American Welding Society Certified Welding or Certified Welder Certificate at the end of their third year in the program. And so the work that we've done. Next slide, thank you. So the work that we've done has really been to align the content of the courses into a sequential number of units that are, you know, dedicated to the content for each specific processes that they are mastering in welding. So we took that content and we aligned it to the understanding by design curriculum framework. We included not only our identified welding standards, but also implemented and included Common Core readiness standards for scientific and technical texts. We included the essential employability competencies as indicated in the Illinois Post-Secondary Workforce Act. And so these are things like critical thinking, teamwork, communication. And so those really job-ready skills that we want to focus on as they relate to the sector in which the students are studying. And so that would be in the manufacturing sector. And then we aligned the units and assessments to our standards-based learning and assessments frameworks. So the process, we had all, we only have three welding teachers. They all teach at Elgin High, so they all were part of the team as well as our teacher leader for pathway design and implementation, Dorian Roberts, and myself. So we convened in July of 2019, we spent a, a full day revisiting and refreshing understanding by design and how it relates to the work that we would be doing in welding. We spent five full days writing those units as far as taking the processes and the content that the, they were already teaching in the three classes and aligning them into the different units and courses. And so that included the standard selection and alignment, completing the unit designs and assessment designs, identifying the resources that we'd like to implement, as well as identifying professional development for the teachers. So this is a general overview of the scope and sequence of the entire pathway, as well as the standards that will be implemented. And so we condensed, there were four welding standards, we condensed them into three and added the post-secondary educational career opportunities as a separate standard to make sure that that was intentionally explored and taught and assessed in the course. And then we added the Common Core State Standards for Scientific and Technical Texts. And those are represented just in the different grade levels as they progress through the pathway. And so what we have here is the, the breakup, so the SMAW, GMAW, GTAW, those are the different welding processes that the students would master. And so it really is a scaffolding of skill. And so once students master one, then they are able to then move on to the next. And then we've also added in safety and math in every course, whether it's an introduction or review. And every course also has a career exploration project, which builds upon previous years, and so students are asked to revisit what their post-secondary goals might be, identify how they might obtain that through post-secondary education and/or apprenticeship or, or trade schools. And so really having them take a full-scale look at what their opportunities are and whether or not that lies in the welding field or engineering or manufacturing in some other state and just having a really solid plan for when they leave high school. So the proposal is, the committee recommends the adoption of the revised welding technology pathway and the identified resources. So the scope of the pathway is for welding fundamentals to start sophomore year. That is a one-period course, a full year. Welding Technology, one being a two-period full-year course in junior year. And then finally, ending in welding technology two, which is a two-period full-year course in senior year, where they would then obtain their certified welding, a certified welder certificate. So the resources that we have identified are the NCCER levels one, two, and four. It is not an error, level three is for pipe welding only, and that is not a process in which we cover. So that's why we do not have level three included. And so those would be the texts, as well as the trainee guide, which allows the students to practice and diagram out blueprints and welding symbols, and then set up, and they call fit up for welding. So a breakdown of the course resource costs. So we have the textbooks and training guides, the online access is for six years, it's for the full scope of the cycle. The teachers have also identified their professional development in that they would like to pursue their certified welding educator certification. So this is offered through the American Welding Society. There's not a course or modules per se, but what they do have is like study guides and training guides for teachers to do at their own pace, and that allows them to then sit for the certified welding educator exam, which just gives them that, another layer of expertise and professionalism as they are instructing students in the welding pathway. And then, as always, with all of our CTE teachers, we would like to increase their capacity and level of best practice for standards-based learning as in, in instruction, as well as, or assessment, as well as instructional best practice. So as I said, the professional development has been self-identified for teachers, and we are also looking at, as I mentioned in the last presentation for the middle school courses, translating that professional development for our language learners to all of CTE. And so that will become a department-wide initiative, once we establish the best possible opportunities for teachers to engage in. So the plans for evaluation have changed our next steps. We'd like to start a professional development as soon as, you know, teachers are able to collaborate and make sure that they are, all have a full understanding of the, the new courses and develop, you know, an ability to collaborate and calibrate on what those look like for implementation in August in 2020. And then any change or revision would come through the, the assessments and, and rate of certification, pass rate of certification, in which we would then take that information to revise our units and assessments. And then, of course, perform those formal and informal walkthroughs to make sure that the work that we did is being implemented in the classroom. And that concludes my presentation.
Do any board members have questions?
So this is Melissa. I had asked the question of, because all students in our district have access to this. So students at our other four comprehensive high schools can go to Elgin High School to take this specific course. Do we have students coming from outside the district as well?
So we do, so this is one of our regional pathways, and then Northern Kane, EFE 110. And so we currently have students primarily, we do have students traveling within the district from other schools to Elgin. Then we also have students coming from Burlington Central District 301 that also come and take the course.
Okay, thank you. And then I appreciate Ms. Kerr's question on the, the recommendation for reading strategies on this. I, I had, I saw that and I flagged it, and then I forgot to ask the question myself. So I don't want to step over Ms. Kerr's question, but I, just out of curiosity, the, the reading strategies for this, they'll be embedded then within the instruction during the course?
So as we looked at incorporating those Common Core State Standards for Scientific and Technical Text, that's a really a whole new world for a lot of our, for all of our welding teachers, actually. And so we talked about, and we went through and developed rubrics and talked about discussed assessments for that. But we really need to dig a little deeper in the instructional piece. And so that's where our collaboration and calibration meetings are really going to be able to align those resources and reading strategies to the specific standard in which the unit that they live. So, you know, depending on if it's, you know, one of the standards is completing a complex multi-step procedure. So what strategies are, you know, whether it's a graphic organizer or a mind map, like what strategies are we able to use to help students read through the technical language, understand the processes, and then develop that through their own welding? So, yeah, it's going to be a whole integrated process.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, just looking through the, the resources that we had the links to. It, it is pretty technical writing, and it's a whole lot different than anything that, you know, we've, you know, probably students have covered up until that time, so.
And, and this text is actually more readable than, the teachers feel it's more readable than the current text, which is post-secondary level. And so we, we are trying to make it as accessible to students as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And you also answered another one of my questions, that we aren't doing any additional investment in, in new labs or anything at this point.
So at this point, you know, we've really done a thorough job at looking at our numbers and enrollment and how, whether or not we're able to support the capacity in the pathway. And while we did see really rapid growth the first couple of years of the pathway, we were allowing freshmen through, you know, juniors to start the pathway at the fundamentals level in which then kind of we were overcapacity in our intro, intro level courses, and then that sequentially, of course, then we were overcapacity in our following levels as well. And so starting next school year, we have committed to only having 10th graders start the pathway so that we can stabilize our numbers. So it, we're looking at pretty much a three-year cycle. So after three years, if we are still at, you know, maximum, maximum or overcapacity, we might look at adding some booths to the lab, which means adding some more machines. But wouldn't, it wouldn't be any facility upgrades or anything like that would be an increase in machines.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Sanders.
Our next proposal is the Project Lead the Way PLTW curriculum proposal for middle school gateway to technology. Here to present is Deb McMullin. This goes with our continuing evolution of our middle school elective program. So with that, Deb, take it over.
So much. I have with me Neil Ford, and he and I had a discussion, and I'm going to go through the slides. And then Neil, one of our lead PLTW teachers, is here to answer, help me answer questions. Next slide, please. Our, our curriculum writing team consists of five. As exciting is that we had bilingual and special ed representation as well on our team. So we're a very, very strong team. Next slide, please. The purpose of the committee was to update Project Lead the Way Gateway Science Curricula with supporting resources, materials, and common assessments to be implemented for next school year. In addition, we wanted to update, our update to include the course, extending it from nine weeks rotation to a semester-long elective. And then also, we updated the course names to provide more information for parents and students. Our rationale, again, was to update the course as necessary for the demands of Project Lead the Way Gateway's requirements, but then also to extend us from nine weeks to full semester. And in the process, we also found potential for extending these courses to our dual-language students. We, we are hitting the goals within our strategic plan for student achievement and also effective and engaged staff. We followed the curriculum writing process through the, the site curriculum cycle as mandated by the district. We used four main resources for our present, for our development of our curriculum. We use PLTW Gateway, the course outline. We also use next generation science standards. We also use the understanding by design process, along with standard-based learning and assessment process. We did this in order to identify our learning outcomes, which were our desired results. We also talked extensively about what kind of evidence that we wanted students to provide us, that we knew that they obtained those desired results. And now we're working to help support our teachers with their unit planning tools in order to put these into practice. Assessment is a very important part of the SPLA process. And so each course will be administering three common assessments. Common assessment data will be loaded into Infinite Campus. The data will then be pulled using Tableau. Individual teachers, PLCs, administrators, and the district science team have access to these Tableau reports. Tableau reports are then used to refine our assessments, make instructional and curricular decisions, and to define, define, sorry, help us design our professional development. Teachers are encouraged to complete a voluntary reflective survey to provide additional feedback for the district science team. Our goal was to start curriculum, you know, professional development in spring. So we're pushing forward with summer of 2020. And then and also, full number of 21, we're bringing everyone together, monitoring our curriculum resources and professional development using information from PLTW, and then also our common assessments and teacher surveys. Our PRT Gateway Course Progression, both courses are available for either seventh or eighth grade students. It's preferred that they take design and modeling first, but a student wouldn't have to. The student could make the choice to take automation and robotics first. If they do that, we've actually designed a, or in the process of designing a a self-study of the design and modeling process that a student can take. And this unit, the specialized unit, can be used as both intervention for design and modeling, and then also as a kickoff to help support our automation and robotics students who didn't take design and modeling, or perhaps just need a review. We have designed professional development with our teachers in mind. We have slated two mandatory trainings, one day of guided planning with student-based learning and assessment, sorry, standard-based learning and assessment process in order to help our teachers through the rubrics we've designed, and then also with what resources that we have from PLTW. And then a day of common assessment calibration, which is very, very important. And then the other PD that's required comes from PLTW in order to have their certification. And so we have slated some in our, in our budget, some funding if teachers have to take those required certifications. All of our PD is going to be available through summer as self-study. Our DCD and PDD days will also be utilized, and then we've got the self-study that they can also do it through the school year on their leisure. The cost for design and modeling is ninety one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's a number of different items in there. And I would imagine Neil, if you have questions, will be able to help us answer those. And then the next slide, please, automation and robotics, also ninety one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And what this will do is allow us to get the materials that we need to support both classes that are highly technical, split across those two classes, and partnering with those two courses. People cost is ninety one dollars and seventy five cents for both design and modeling and automation and robotics. Our total cost for the adoption is one hundred and eighty three thousand and five hundred dollars. And our next steps are, once implemented, is to survey our teachers, to look at our curriculum templates using our data, this various data data points that we're data points that we're collecting from common assessments. And we want to review and revise our curriculum templates and our rubrics in accordance with the district curriculum cycle. And then also, we'd like to design a student post-course survey in order to get feedback from the students so that we're making sure that we're hitting all of their needs and interests. That concludes my presentation.
I don't have any questions. Comments?
Hi, this is Melissa. I apologize that I didn't ask this in my submitted questions, but it just kind of came to my mind as we were going through the presentation. Do we think that there will need to be any adjustments at the high school level for PLTW, given the fact that students now in middle school will be taking a more comprehensive course? Just wondering if if there's any anticipated plans for making adjustments in that in that course level and and at high schools.
I would, I'm going to need to get back to you. That's an awesome question. I think it's a question that I would have to partner with Tracy Stewart. I don't know if Tracy is still on and she wants to help answer that question. But I think that's something that we're going to have to get back with you on. Tracy and I do collaborate, of course, and I and I think that's something that we can we can definitely get back to you on. I don't know, Neil, if you have any.
Deb, I'm I'm still on, Deb, so if you want, I can speak to. So the progression of PLTW is very intentional in that there's no overlap or redundancy in their programs. And so they really scaffold up the skills that students are using as far as the design process, which is really kind of the bulk of all of the different PLTW courses. And then they work up in their complexity. And so when students enter high school, they would start with the intro to engineering and design. So the design process is still kind of the the center of that learning, but they're just doing it in in the context of different, you know, specific areas. So while in in the gateway courses, it's the automation and robotics. In the high school level courses, it's more on the engineering side. So they take the same basic foundational content and then extrapolate it out into some more diversified topics.
We also looked in, we also looked into going deeper rather than going wider. So the current things that we teach in Project Lead the Way, we're just looking at extending those deeper and then in more understanding for the students with with different projects. So it's really not going to be outside the framework that we're currently in and using for Project Lead the Way because it is a curriculum that comes from a national project lead the way. And we have to stay within those bounds and that directly feeds into the high school system.
Okay, thank you for that. And then this is probably a question for Neil, but I'm just curious, what is a VEX cortex?
A VEX cortex is the brain of the robots that we use. The VEX system is a building system for any automation or robotic system that the student designs and makes. So it's, those of you who have been around long enough, you're like Legos. It's like, I didn't start Lego like in an erector set, basically. And there's a cortex that goes along with it. That's a programmable microprocessor that we use. And that is from, that comes directly from Project Lead the Way. That is the one they have adopted.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? To follow up with Melissa's question, is it an advantage for kids to take these courses in middle school before they take them in high school? Or can they do okay in high school without taking them?
Well, I think they can. They can still do okay in high school without them, but it gives them a sound foundation when they go into high school. The main thing that we focus on is design, the the design process. And for them to have exposure to the design process and exposure to the CAD programs that we use and exposure to the VEX system, which is used in automation and robotics, they have a leg up that they can go in there and they can actually start going into the the material deeper and not having to learn the basics of the VEX and the other things. So it does give them a leg up, but of course, a student can do fine. It may take them a little bit of a slower learning curve to get up to speed, but they can do without it if they need to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, next item, Mr. Sanders.
And I said him is the Student Code of Conduct. Here to present is Dr. Robin Baradza, Coordinator of Student Discipline, Mr. Rodriguez, Chief Legal Officer, and Mr. Rodriguez's Staff Attorney. Robin?
Okay. This presentation is part of the annual review process of the Student Code of Conduct. The intention for this year's revisions to the Student Code of Conduct was really to increase clarity in order to support equity of access to information and ease of use to students, parents, and staff. And the purpose of our Student Code of Conduct is, one, to articulate the rights and responsibilities of students, parents, and staff. Two, to articulate U46's philosophy and belief that our primary goal is to promote positive student behavior and to use disciplinary consequences to teach students and change student behavior and to do so without an overreliance on exclusionary disciplinary practices. And third, to promote safety in our schools by providing students, parents, and staff with information on which specific behaviors are prohibited in schools and school-related events and what they can expect from us if their child is involved in a disciplinary situation and to hold us accountable to our stated policies and procedures. Summary of the changes that we submitted in our memo and in the updated Student Code of Conduct document. Changes this year were primarily limited to reorganizing sections, removing duplicate extraneous information, and updating the language to better align with Illinois School Code and Board Policy Language. I know we were able to answer a few questions earlier today, but if anybody else has any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have questions? And I think some of the questions you answered had to do with the new Title IX decisions. Could you just briefly summarize what you answered for us?
I defer to Luis Rodriguez on that, and let him, the legal minds take that one.
No problem. So thank you, Dr. Barazza. In short, this is what we were recommending. I think in in the in the current Student Code of Conduct, plus the proposed changes before you, there exist some catch-all provisions. And as this board will probably recall, we did that intentionally two or three years back so that the administration would have the opportunity to address any changes subsequent to the Student Code of Conduct's approval. They could do that with the administrative procedures. With respect to Title IX, we, that language that exists pre the new implementation, which will occur, I believe, August 14. That's one of the things Dr. Barazza and myself, as well as Miguel, we were contemplating. That language is there right now because we have summer session for students. So we have to have something that applies up until the new implementation goes in. Options for that could be leaving the language as is, depending on our catch-all provision. Or we can always hyperlink that as an administrative document because if we ever make amendments to the board's policies, they will always apply to the Student Code of Conduct. So we can hyperlink that along with other links to the board's policies so that when new changes are made in line with those new procedures, they will automatically apply to the Student Code of Conduct. But either way, it currently, when I say it, I mean, the Student Code of Conduct already has catch-all provisions in it. I believe you can find those on page four right at the beginning. And then various sections also have those catch-all provisions that allow the SEC to always comply with the board's policies.
Thank you. And also, I noticed that you had noted that you're going to get some student input at the secondary schools on this. And I think that's that's a good idea as well. So thank you for that. Any other questions?
This is Melissa. I I like the idea of having the hyperlinks in there, especially for the Title IX. I know that, you know, these are, these are some complicated changes that that came through on the federal guidance. So to the degree that we can make this document, you know, I I appreciate that we have these catch-all phrases in there. But I think that, you know, having the hyperlinks, it allows families to gather as much information as they as they can without trying to go through the process of interpreting a catch-all phrase.
So I I told, I agree 100%. I think that's a process is already begun, I think, as we responded to the board's questions, making sure that all those hyperlinks align. The only thing I would add to that is just perhaps then amending that section about Title IX so that there is a hyperlink directly to just that section versus having a comprehensive step-by-step in there. That way, in the event that it has to be amended, we're not going back to the document. It can be hyperlinked online.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you to the team and thanks for the feedback you went through to get this year. Appreciate it. Our next work session items are all resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing the transfer of interest earnings from the Working Cash Fund to the Operation Maintenance Fund. Mr. Burnage is here to walk the board through what that means. Mr. Burnage?
Yes, this is an annual resolution. The amount that we're requesting to transfer this year is 6.2 million. And so administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of interest from the Working Cash Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund.
Does anyone have any questions? Hey, thank you, Mr. Burnage.
Our next is a resolution authorizing the school treasurer to make bond and interest payments. This is also an annual resolution that gives the treasurer authority to make bond and interest payments in FY '21, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021. Mr. Burnage can answer any board questions, but otherwise, administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing the school treasurer to make bond and interest payments.
Are there any questions? Hey, thank you.
Our next is also an annual resolution authorizing participation in federal and state-supported programs. As the board knows, the district receives many federal and state grants that require Board of Education approval. This resolution allows the grant application and acceptance process to move ahead without each individual application coming to the board for approval. Mr. Burnage can answer any board questions, but administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing participation in federal and state-supported programs.
Are there any questions? Next item.
Our next is an annual resolution requesting the approval of hazardous transportation designation. This resolution is required annually by the State of Illinois and the Illinois State Board of Education. The resolution confirms that the hazardous transportation area designations previously approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation still exist. And that students that resided within the designated areas during the 2019-2020 school year were provided free transportation services. The district also requests reimbursement from the state for transportation services provided. Beth Lappa, the Assistant Director for Transportation, is with us and can answer any board questions. But with that, administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the resolution requesting approval of hazardous transportation area designations.
Are there any questions? Hey, thank you.
Our next, our work session items are contracts over $25,000. The first is a contract for teaching and learning English Language Learned Department with Northern Illinois, Northern Illinois University Bilingual ESL Teacher Cohort. Mr. Phelps is with us tonight, as well as Dr. Carpenter and Dr. Acevedo, if the board asks questions. Administration recommends approval of the five-year contract with Northern Illinois University not to exceed the amount of $144,000 and request authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to Title III funds and the cost is included in the budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year and the subsequent terms outlined in the contract.
I don't have any questions. I know I had a couple that you responded to. We have 20 participants from the first cohort that are that will be finishing up in the next, this coming year, I guess. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And also, teachers who are in this program have to agree to work for us a certain number of years or have to reimburse us for the tuition.
Also correct, yes.
Any other questions?
This is Melissa. Do, have you received any feedback from the teachers that are in the first cohort?
I have. So, yes, the feedback has been very positive. It is a rigorous course, so I've received that feedback as well. It's it's a demanding coursework. And, you know, they've shared that it's it's been tough, but that it's been very rewarding and so worth the work. But we make sure that I have an informational meeting whenever we're going to have one of these cohorts and we let them know that it is it is a rigorous program. So we we try to be upfront and we have teachers share their experiences. And the teachers do, and they're very honest and they share how valuable it is. But they also share that it's a lot of work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you.
Our next contract is a contract renewal for the Educational Services Center with K-12 Insight for Let's Talk Customer Service and Stakeholder Engagement Solution. Joining me tonight with this presentation, in addition, Mr. Phelps, is Brian Lindholm, Coordinator of Strategic Initiatives. Administration recommends approval of the four-year contract renewal with K-12 Insight in the amount of $320,000 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in this year's fiscal year budget and the remaining fiscal years that this would apply to. I know there are questions.
Questions?
I know the board asked several questions on Let's Talk as well that were answered that are on the the memo.
I know you mentioned that it's been used quite a bit since distance learning, so.
Yeah, Mr. Lindholm can probably speak better than I can, but the and Mary Fergus as well. The ability to interact with with parents, employees, general, any community concerns it makes it exceptionally easy for us to track and monitor response rates, customer satisfaction levels. Every department that's used it has really used it full force this year, especially with the pandemic, has been very beneficial. Mary or Brian, anything you want to add?
I would just say, you know, part of our communication plan for for keeping families informed during distance learning and really ever since the COVID crisis hit, we set up specific channels around the different types of topics that we thought people would have questions about. And Mr. Kerr, as as you suggested, I mean, the volume went from like 200 a month to we had almost 1,000 in the month of April. So really, March, April, May, we've had huge volumes that have come in. And then we have dozens of people who are responding now. So I think it's become a really effective way for staying in touch with the community.
And and as a reminder, not only are we getting the questions coming in, but it aggregates all of that data for us and gives us things like a word wall. We can actually monitor to see what are the big issues across the district by topic. And that way, we can address, you know, the work that Mary's been doing to communicate out to our communities in large part is based on what people are asking through Let's Talk. So it's been very beneficial. Mary, did you want to say something?
Just that we also get a number of kudos that I I don't think we expected when we started Let's Talk. We we thought about it mainly as a platform to answer questions, but because we have a kudos format in our weekly message, parents and community members also send us kind words. And that's just been kind of a silver lining even through this time of the pandemic. So just another nice part of it.
I had submitted a question about the professional development days and you did answer that, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hey, moving on.
Our next is a contract renewal for Information Services with AirWatch Mobile Device Management Software. Joining Mr. Phelps in this presentation is Laura Macias, Director of Information Services. Administration recommends approval of the contract with CDWG in the amount of $61,750 and request authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for this fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Hey, moving on.
All right. Our next is a contract renewal for Information Services with Microsoft License Renewal. Administration recommends approval of the contract with CDWG in the amount of $144,502.96 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in this year's budget.
Are there any questions?
Item for with Laura Macias with us still is the contract renewal for Information Services with Cisco Smart Net License Renewal. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Mindsight in the amount of $115,998.8 and request authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for this year.
Are there any questions? Hey, next item.
Our next is the contractor deal with the Illinois Association. Our next is the Contract Renewal with the Illinois Association of School Boards' annual dues. Administration recommends approval to renew the annual dues in the amount of $33,240 as submitted by the Illinois Association of School Boards. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in next year's fiscal budget.
Are there any questions?
This is Melissa. I don't, I don't have a question necessarily. I just want to say that I know that, you know, historically, there's been some question about the the membership with IASB and the value that we get from that. I do want to say that I'm appreciative that the dues have come down for this next year. So that's a, that's a great thing for us. But at the same time, IASB has really stepped up their game. From what I've seen the last, you know, three years that I've been on the board and what has transpired since the the pandemic hit, they've, they've really come through with with providing as many forums as possible for us to jump in on. Sometimes it might seem like it's a little bit too much information coming in, but, you know, it's, it's just, it's really helpful to be able to see and hear what other districts are are working against, what they're struggling with, what they're able to do well. So just to be able to continue that conversation with other board members across the state of Illinois has been, I think, invaluable. And I'm really happy with the, with the work that they've done, both to keep us informed with things that are going on at the state and federal level. And, you know, to that end, we're, we're, we're gonna need good advocates at both the state and federal level as we move through this pandemic and the financial outfall that's going to come from that. But I, you know, I really believe that the value that we're getting from from IASB at this point is is worth the amount that we're going to be paying in dues.
And I agree with Melissa. As a fairly new board member, that's been on the board for one year. It's been an advantage for me to take advantage of the different webinars and workshops that they have. I've learned so much. So it's been great for me, very educational.
And I think they've made an effort to address some of the concerns of larger districts. I know that there was sort of a mini rebellion even before the pandemic from larger districts who felt that they weren't getting the bang for the buck. So they have given us, for example, Ben Schwarm has come out twice to address us. I think we get other benefits as well. So they've really, I think, are listening to people, which is great. Any other comments? Hey, moving on to bids and proposals.
Our next is a bid from Transportation for a two-way radio system. Joining us again with Mr. Phelps is Beth Lappa, Assistant Director of Transportation. Administration recommends award of the low bid meeting specification to Illinois Communications Sales, Inc. in the amount of $132,066.78 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the transportation fund and is included in this year's budget.
Are there any questions? Hey, next item.
I feel bad. Beth didn't get any questions tonight. Two items, no questions for Beth. Oh, well.
I, I just gotta put in, hey, this is, I'm astounded that our current radio system is 40 years old.
Right?
So that I, just a comment on that.
All right. Thank you. Our next is a bid from Plan Operations for equipment purchase, five pickup trucks. Sheila Downs has joined the conversation for that, Director of Plan Operations. Administration recommends award of the low bid meeting specification to Roche Ford in the amount of $184,890 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the operations and maintenance fund and is included in the budget for this year.
Are there any questions? I know I had one question, and that was whether we had an agent obsolescence plan, and I guess we will, but we haven't in the past, which is.
Right. So we, we had one. However, during times of tight financial climates, some of our equipment and our fleet agent obsolescence reports don't really get stringently adhered to. And so our district mechanic has done a fabulous job of keeping our fleet alive and well. So I think the grounds team, that's a big kudos to them. But realistically, the goal is to get back to the age of the report and then actually adhere to it the best that we can.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and many board members came with me on the site visits to Plan Operations and saw some of our, the fleet vehicles that are out there literally being held together, thanks to the hard work of of some quality mechanics out there. So thanks for keeping them running, but it'll be, it's time to replace some of those.
Absolutely. And I'll share that with the mechanics. Thank you, Tony.
Hey, next item.
Our next is a proposal from Plan Operations for equipment purchase playgrounds. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Game Time in the amount of $274,652.48 and requests authorization for administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the operation and maintenance fund and is included in this year's budget.
Are there any questions? I had asked one question because way back in the day, I remember playgrounds were generally purchased by a lot of PTO money. And I guess that's changed, which is good, to be honest with you. Do we, do we have a estimation of how long a playground should last?
We obviously make them stretch. I would say typically, I've worked with park districts in the past, and I know that the park districts that I worked with formerly, they were on a 15-year replacement plan. And so give or take 15 years is typical for a replacement cycle.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, next item.
Our last item is a proposal from Food and Nutrition Services for the purchase of two food packaging machines. Joining me for tonight, in addition, Mr. Phelps, is Elena Hildreth, our Director of Food and Nutrition Services. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Ameripack for a total of $291,066 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Food and Nutrition Fund, and it is included in the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
And are there any questions? All right, since that is my.
Since we have Elena with us, can we give her our Food and Nutrition Services Department, well, everybody stepped up during this pandemic, but very, I mean, the visible piece of our work has shifted to food and nutrition, and Elena Hildreth, leading that that part of the organization, has done an amazing job, her and her team, in providing meals across U46 over a million, as you all know. So since we have her.
Thank you, Elena.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the support. It's been fun.
And over the summer, we'll be doing distributions twice a week?
Twice a week. We started today, and we serve 34,000 meals at 14 sites. So we cut down the number of sites, and the meals are still there. So we serve again on Thursday, Mondays and Thursdays through July 30.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, since that last item, I will read the thing to move into closed session. So can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters pending probable or imminent litigation? The employment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the school board, the setting of price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review of closed session minutes, and individual student matters.
Still moved. This is Veronica.
Second, this is Melissa.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deborah?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Thank you. The answer is yes. She said yes. And then matter of precedent?
Yes.
We are enclosed.
We'll see you all enclosed.